And she made good contributions to the commission and to the community. And we thank her for that, and I would appreciate it if there would be a motion, please, to recognize Mickey for her contributions.
So moved.
Motion from Brian, support?
Support.
Support from Eric. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We wish her well, she moves on to other things. Second thing, commissioners, I greatly appreciate the flexibility in your scheduling. You know, we had recently scheduled this meeting for the first Monday in March, but due to personal reasons, there was a need to move the meeting, and it's much appreciated that everybody could be flexible and be here tonight. So, thank you very much for that, that helps. We'll move now to the additions or deletions to the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to change the agenda from that which was published? Seeing no hands, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Motion from Jay, support?
Support.
Support from Brian. Call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item of business is the Garcia-Roaring Club. You have in your package an application that came into the township back in July, basically one year from when they received their approval from us for the special land use and the site plan approval. And per our ordinances, after a year, you know, they need to have their, basically be re-upped. And so, due to circumstances, the, it didn't get on the agenda quite when it needed to, but, you know, they did everything they were supposed to do. So, tonight, you know, we're going to vote on extending their approvals. I think from, you know, all those of you who, all of you were here at the time, you knew what a complex project it was and how they needed to, after they had their approvals, they needed approvals in order to generate money. So, it was really not surprising, given the amount of money they needed and the sequence that they were going to need this. So, to me, this was just, this is an administrative thing that we really just need to take care of. So, does anybody have any discussion on this?
Have a question.
Yes, please.
Do they still intend to move forward with things, or are we just?
Brian?
Yeah.
Extended, extended?
Yep, no, at this point, I haven't had any recent contact with the applicant, but staff has, and they do, they do intend to continue moving forward. So, at this point, this extension will give them up until fall of this year, this current year, to get things in order from a permitting standpoint and engineering standpoint. If they do not, then we may or may not be having this conversation again. But at this point, it's my understanding they do intend to continue forward with the project.
And one more point of clarification, are you allowed only one extension, or can you continue for seven?
Well, the ordinance is a little vague on that end. I don't recall too many instances where we've had people come in for more than a single extension. I would, if it's okay with you, I thought that question might come up, and I would like to take a little more time to reread that paragraph of the ordinance for our next meeting, and I can get back to you with a more solid answer. I believe you could probably read it either way, but I wanna, I wanna read it again a couple times and give you what I think is the best interpretation on what the ordinance says. Most communities allow people to come back more than once, if needed. Generally speaking, you have to present some justification for your extension. It's not merely, "Well, we got our approval and we've just been, you know, sitting on our hands for the last year," or "We forgot about it," or anything like that. If there are, in fact, mitigating circumstances, it's not uncommon, in certain instances, for a big project like that to take a year or two to actually get underway, especially understanding some of their funding issues. But, I'll confirm, and we'll have this conversation again briefly at the next meeting.
Very good, thank you, Brian. Other question, or Steve, I'm sorry.
No problem. So, just to bring up, up to speed, the Roaring Club was at the Township Board meeting within the last month, I don't know if it was the previous one, maybe the one previous to that. At the time, it hired a professional fundraiser. So, they had been with the board asking for some assistance in that fundraising, so the project is definitely continuing.
Very good, thanks for the update. Additional comments? If not, I warrant a motion regarding the application from the Roaring Club for the one-year extension. Motion from Jay, support?
Support.
Support from Brian. Call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much. Unfortunately, I jumped past the approval of the minutes, so we'll go backwards. Did anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes? Brian?
None.
Jay?
No.
Steve?
No.
Jim?
I'm all set.
Eric?
No.
Entertainer motion to approve as submitted.
Ooh.
Eric, motion, support?
Support.
Support Jay. Call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried, minutes are approved. Again, Lori, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the regular agenda again. Item six, public hearing on ordinance changes for Article 16, which is assigned regulations, and Article 19, which deals with waste receptacles. The background on this is that the Planning Commission is responsible to maintain the Township zoning ordinances. We recently received two requests for ordinance modifications. The first came from the ZBA, and it was in regards to the signs ordinance, specifically the prohibition that we have on electronic signs, that the new gas station owners, or whatever, I guess, on the corner of McComb and Parkway, yeah, Meridian and Parkway, I'll get it right in a minute, Meridian and McComb, thank you, had asked to have an electronic sign put up, and our ordinance would not allow that. That electronic sign would reflect the change in gas prices. We said we would consider it. The second was a request that we got originally from the Lutheran Church by the Township supervisor, which, which asked us to expand the allowed materials of construction that are used for the bins that go around the trash receptacles, okay? And again, we said that we would consider such actions. We followed that up by asking Brian to go ahead and prepare the changes that this board had talked about, and to have them ready for presentation today, and we could hold a public hearing, and then promptly forward those on to the board if the Planning Commission He did so, and you have it in your packet. The process for ordinance amendments is outlined in Article 25 of our zoning ordinance, which is entitled Amendments to Zoning Ordinance, and specifically, there are three steps. The first is, the Planning Commission holds a public hearing. We then vote on a recommendation to be made to the Township Board. The Township Board then considers it and makes the final decision regarding the change. So, tonight, we're going to take on steps one or two. We'll hold a public hearing on these two changes, and then make a recommendation to the board. So, Brian, I'd like to cover these things basically sequentially, but we'll hold one public hearing, and then cover both of them, and then move on. So, please start off with the signs ordinance, run through it, and then we'll take questions from the Planning Commission, and then move on to the next one.
I did a couple of brief summary slides, are your monitors?
Yes, sir, we're on.
Okay, fantastic. I just don't know if anybody can hear me.
Try it again. Try it now.
There we go. All right, sorry about that. So, the first one I'm gonna hit, and I apologize if these are out of order from the agenda, but I'm gonna tackle the gas station pricing signage first, just because I put it first in my presentation, so.
That's received.
That's what we get first. So, there are two sections of the signed regulations that we have proposed to amend for this, sort of, this individual topic. The first one is something that I think is probably not necessary, but I think it will be helpful in the future, especially for staff, and that is adding a new subsection to the chapter, to the section on prohibited signage. Currently, 16.5C lists all of the types of signage in the township that are prohibited. Not specifically listed are changeable message signs. There has always been, and it's a long-held interpretation that has held up over time, the township has taken a stance that they do not allow electronic changeable message signs, but we've always prohibited it based on an interpretation of one or two other subsections of this particular section. There is the occasion where staff is confronted by somebody who wishes to say, basically, we tell them, "You can't do it," and they say, "Show me in the ordinance where it says I can't do that." If we have to play connect the dots with them, it doesn't always go over well. I think it's best personally to just add it right in. So, I think we're just adding a clarifying statement which supports the stance that the township has always had on this issue. We're not really changing anything, but I do think we're making it a little bit easier for, A, for the layperson to understand, and B, for staff to feel comfortable and confident telling people that this type of sign is not allowable within the township. That being said, we are incorporating one exception to that prohibition, and that would be for gas station signage only. If we jump to Section 16.8D, and specifically Paragraph 7, outlines the specific regulations for gas station signage. What we have proposed, based on our discussion at the last meeting, is to add a new Paragraph F, which would, would allow the incorporation of electronic changeable message only for gasoline pricing. So, keep that in mind. So, it's not gonna be the logo, it's not gonna be other items for sale, technically it shouldn't even be the type of gas that it is. It is literally just those number places for the dollars and cents, and sometimes they take it to that extra, what are they, thousandths of a cent, but nonetheless, you know what I'm talking about, you know what I'm referring to when I say that. We did add a couple of additional protection measures, in my opinion, and these are things that we discussed at the last meeting. So, we've incorporated a size restriction in that it's a ratio base, so that not more than 50% of the sign area can be devoted to the actual numerals for the electronic changeable message sign. We reaffirmed that you have to still comply with the township's sign lighting standards. There's another section within Article 16 that addresses illumination of signs, and I felt, I felt that those provisions were fine as written, but wanted to make sure that any, any electronic changeable message component would still find itself in compliance with the rest of your, your conventional illumination standards. And then finally, a prohibition on flashing, blinking, anything that would draw attention to the site or to the sign, in that the sign is essentially to remain static, is how I phrased it in the draft, so that other than when the prices are actually being changed, you should not see any movement or fluctuation in any of those numerals for that particular item. And that's pretty much it for that one. Do you wanna take questions on that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, let's stop and run through the commission members here and see what comments or concerns they might have. Brian, let's start with you.
As far as the percentage of the sign dedicated to the changeable price, 50%, I'm just thinking about that, if it's for the full sign, it seems like quite a large amount. So, I mean, is this the same sign, like if it said Sunoco or something on there? You know, you're saying that 50% of the sign could be dedicated to just these electronic numbers, and the other 50% would be crammed, the name of the actual, you know, gas station, as well as, you know, the type of gas that was there? So, it seems like it could get a little crowded, I was just wondering if this has been done in other communities at the same ratio.
I have used the 50% ratio elsewhere.
Your microphone kicked off.
All right, sorry. I have used the 50% ratio elsewhere. I think the trick to remember is that it is a maximum, so it is a not to exceed, which would mean that we're basically putting it up to the applicant. So, if Sunoco, for instance, wants to increase their, their price signage, then the actual Sunoco logo and text is going to be somewhat smaller. There is no, there's no real reason that ratio couldn't be changed. That's just one that I have used in a couple of other ordinances. So, if the, if the commission feels that it's a little bit out of whack, then we could certainly knock that down. But again, I wanna remind you that it is a maximum percentage, so you could not go beyond that 50%. The rest of how the sign lays out would be up to the applicant.
What is the ma, I'm sorry, Brian, what is the maximum size of the sign that we allow?
I believe it would still fall to the 32 square foot standard for a ground sign.
So, 32 square feet. So, up to 16, basically, which would be four by four.
Okay.
And typically, you know, I mean, we've all seen these in our travels and on island. I mean, typically, there's upwards of, there's usually three types of gasoline that are noted, varying grades within the prices for each. I, the 50% is likely a little high. I can't envision in my mind a sign where somebody would have taken advantage to fully max out. In that case, you'd have 16 square feet to divvy up amongst three numbers, you know, resulting in five plus-ish square feet per actual price. Two by two, one and a half by three, and that's, that's pretty, pretty big. So, I'm not sure that more times than not, it would actually get maxed out, but if, but if there's some discomfort from the commission, like I said, there's no reason that we can't change that number.
Thank you.
Brian, do you have an opinion, do you wanna see it changed, or?
I mean, just bring it up more for conversational purposes, to see, you know, is that normal? I trust that if there's multiple communities that have done that, it's probably not gonna go up higher, you know, I don't have a problem leaving that it is, but if it's something that we did micromanage more of the sign area, it's something that we should be looking at a little more detail then.
Okay. Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, I had a chance to look at it before the meeting, and a couple of drafts of it, and I think it's, I think it accomplishes what we're looking for. I hadn't thought about the 50%, I said, "Well, that must be a pretty good number." So, it's probably a good question.
Nice number.
It seemed like a nice round number, seemed as good as any. But, you know, I, I'm not sure, unless we did a study, you know, and kind of drew out some drawings and that sort of thing, you know, I think, I think most of our users of these things, I mean, they're not a lot, you know, 32 square feet sounds like a lot, but eight by four, I'm sorry, you've got some.
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm sorry, I was reading and listening, I really can do that. I assure you. There is actually, there's a specific restriction that actually takes gasoline station signage under the conventional ground sign. So, there's actually a 20 square foot maximum for a gas station price sign. So, in essence, that, that shifts those numbers, I'm not gonna do the math for you, 'cause you're all bright gentlemen, so I think we can see where that's going.
Okay. Now, I, I, I think it's, I think it's a good question, a good point. I think leaving it at 50 probably makes sense, unless somebody can quickly sketch something out and tell us why, but I think, I like the standard as it's drafted.
Thank you, Jay. Steve?
I do wanna thank you for this thorough review. I agree with your proposed changes, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Steve. Jim?
I concur with everything said. You hit all the points we talked about last time, as well as I've seen this a couple weeks in advance, so it looks what we had talked about. So, appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Eric?
I'm happy with how it's drafted.
Okay. Let's move on to the second ordinance change, please.
Waste receptacles, another exciting topic. Section 19.14, Paragraph D, regulates required enclosures around waste receptacles. This is a case where Chairman gave you the background, you'll all recall the discussion we had last month, which was primarily related to material of the enclosure. Since we were opening this up, we, we made an attempt to tidy up a couple of other paragraphs within this particular regulation. That's why you'll see a little bit more change than just the material. But, in quick summary, Paragraph 2, we have changed up the language a little bit, and are essentially now going to simply require that the enclosure be gated. There was an opportunity, which was a little bit vague, and provided a lot of discretion for someone to not have to put a gate across the open side of a waste receptacle enclosure. If you, if you read through the red line, you can see that there was an option for a gate to not be required if it was not visible from public street or residential properties. I'm not really sure what the intent of that was. That seems like a, kind of a dangerous setup to me. So, that has been rewritten to now require that a gate be provided regardless of whether it is visible from a public street or a residential neighborhood, and that it is also to be kept closed except for access to and from the actual dumpster or receptacle that is contained. Paragraph 3 is really the focus of what we talked about last month, so this proposed amendment would give Planning Commission the discretion to allow an alternative material. As you'll recall from our conversation, your ordinance currently allows a masonry enclosure or use of treated lumber was one option. Having heard some input from, from the church, it sounded as though they wanted to go in a different direction, and what we've done is drafted up a, a set of criteria by which Planning Commission can, can choose to use or not use your discretion. I felt that some of the important measures were going to be the zoning district that it's within. For instance, McComb Street, we predominantly have masonry enclosures, we're looking for masonry buildings. I'm not sure that McComb Street is the right place for a non-masonry or non-wood enclosure. I'm not saying we would preclude that, we could certainly consider it if you were presented with that option, but I do think the actual district that you're cited in is one consideration. The nature of the use, is it commercial, is it, is it a residential district but a non-residential use, like an institutional type of use? I think the actual use of the property may play a factor in how you choose to use this discretion. The, the character of surrounding properties as well. Are there residences that are located immediately adjacent and/or have potential sightlines into the dumpster enclosure area? So, I think the character of adjacent properties is important, and then I sort of preluded into the last one, which is the visibility of the enclosure. So, if it's something that's to the side of a building and is visible, say, again, from McComb Street, that may be one consideration where those sightlines warrant use of a, a little bit better material. Conversely, it may be on a 10-acre parcel that houses a church, and the enclosure is located in the back of the lot in a wooded area that nobody will ever see, in which instance, maybe you don't have to go full masonry. So, I tried to come up with as many different ideas that I thought would impact the quality of material that we would want to see, and that you all, as a commission, would want to see, so that you would have some guidance. I didn't wanna just leave it open-ended, in that you have discretion to allow it, I wanted to give you some reasons to use or not use that discretion, as I mentioned earlier. So, that's the proposed Paragraph 3. And then the last one is an amendment to Paragraph 4, and that was to put in some added protection measures whereby, if you do propose to utilize something that's maybe a little less durable, a little less solid, you may recall one of my big initial objections to the use of a vinyl screen fence was the potential for the receptacle to, to damage that enclosure. So, we've amended this section and required a spacing distance between edge of container and edge of enclosure, and then we also have the ability to require further protection measures, such as curbing, you could maybe use bumper blocks, we prefer to see curbing or bollards are the two that I specifically put in the draft, but that way, we do have some added protections where if a dumpster is dropped down and it happens to shake or move a little bit, it doesn't puncture the side of, of a less durable material in terms of the enclosure. So, I thought those were important considerations, and I think that will provide enough protection such that we will, we will not have a bunch of damaged and dinged up and dilapidated waste receptacle enclosures, should we choose to allow some less durable materials.
Thank you, sir. Let's, again, run around the table and see what opinions commissioners have. Let's start down here with Jim.
Just two quick questions. One, with us changing that you have to have a gate now, are current, current people that own dumpsters, are they grandfathered in, or do we then go on a mission to knock on everyone's door who has a dumpster and have them have to put gates on?
Well, it's, it's, this is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment, so anybody that is lawful prior to adoption and effective date of this ordinance would retain some, some non-conforming rights if they, if they had them to begin with. So, I don't know that the township is gonna go out on a serious enforcement issue with this, because it was just an item, again, I think we just wanted to clean up a little bit, 'cause if, if you go back and, again, can read through the red line, there was the potential for Planning Commission to not require a gate if it was not visible from a public street or residential district. So, if there are ungated enclosures out there, we would first need to go back and check the record, check the meeting minutes, check the file, actually look at the plans as approved to make sure the Planning Commission did or did not grant that exception in that particular instance. So, it's a long-winded, I'm not sure if I answered the question.
Other quick question was regarding the two feet, is that, is that standard? And I guess what I'm thinking from is, when you pick up a dumpster, typically you have the forks, and those go to the outside of the dumpster, so usually there's a build-out of probably another six inches to a foot on the dumpster, so are you saying two feet from that point? Because you usually have that, right, that's either a square or rectangular dumpster, and then you have that bump out.
Right.
And my thought is, is the bump out's gonna be what's gonna catch when the forks are coming down? So, are you talking another two feet on either side from that?
The way it's drafted is not less than two feet from the receptacle to the enclosure. So, I would measure that from the outermost point of the enclosure, or the innermost point of the enclosure to the outermost point of the receptacle, if that makes sense. And then we wrote a not less than two feet.
Got it.
So, it could be more if warranted. This would be another one of those, again, where that number, if you don't feel that's enough, I mean, one of the things we don't wanna do is, we don't wanna have people building enclosures that have, are, you know, 20 foot by 20, and then there's a little dumpster stuck in the middle of it. I think we've gotta, you know, use some common sense at some point, but felt that two foot was a, was a decent number as a, as a minimum point, again, kind of just the opposite of the sign discussion as a maximum, but as a minimum, felt that that was reasonable.
Great, thank you. Steve?
Hi, appreciate your time on this, and I think you had a home run, thank you for the recommendations. No changes.
Love it, love this guy.
Jay?
Yeah, I also had a chance to review this, I thought it was, was very good. The question, to build on Jim's point, would you think there'd be any confusion on that? Somebody might try to measure from the box itself and not including the brackets on the side, or would you think that would be pretty clear to an applicant, we wouldn't end up with an argument over that?
To me, it's pretty clear, but I, I mean, if you're, we can wordsmith this thing still. I mean, if we wanna say, I can say spacing between, you know, any point of the enclosure or, there's a phrase that we could come up with, I guess, to emphasize that we are going from outermost edge of the, of the receptacle, I'm sorry, receptacle and enclosure, I'm sort of trying to keep the distinction there. But in this case, I mean, it's the, between the enclosure and the receptacle, not less than two feet.
And if, if push came to shove, and an applicant came in and, and were arguing that they should only have to measure from the box itself and not including the brackets on the side for the, to catch the arms, I mean, would we just tell them to take their silly argument away, or would we be worried about it at all?
I wouldn't be worried about it. I mean, I can say, let me, let me just kinda try to do this on the fly, spacing between the enclosure and any part of the receptacle, I mean, I can, we can, to me, any, any bracket or any, any forklift, anything is, is part of the receptacle. So, I feel pretty comfortable that we'd be okay with that, and at that point, if they're nitpicking over a couple of inches within their waste receptacle, they, they probably have bigger problems than just their waste receptacle.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, if we can foreclose any
Agreed.
Problems down the road.
This is, this is all. This is, this is, this is why we go through this whole process. So, um, you know, my eyes see one thing and, and I hear one thing and, and you all are the ones that are going to be forced to make the actions on it. So, um, I want to make sure that you're comfortable with it and if, uh, um, if we're both comfortable, I think we can present it in the same fashion. I think that applicants would understand that as well.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with it as driven. It's a very good addition.
I think the changes are great, are common sense. I think they give us the leeway that we need, uh, to, you know, to apply this and use our best judgment. So, great job. Thanks.
Okay, then on that note, uh, we'll move to the next step, which is to open the public hearing. So, I'll formally open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, oh, Eric, I'm sorry.
I don't lie down here in the end, but, no, overall, overall, it's good. I do have one question though, and just maybe a little bit of clarification.
Absolutely.
A, a number of four, it basically says that, uh, they may be required, but they either are required or the Planning Commission can require them. I'm just not sure. What would make them required? I think the intent is that the Planning Commission would be able to say yes or no.
Yeah, I, I think that I could maybe clean that up a little bit. I, I, in all honesty, I think really the intent is that if it's, if it's needed, there, then we're going to require them if you don't already propose them. Nine times out of 10, we're probably going to see bollards proposed within a new receptacle enclosure anyway. Um, but I think I was sort of bringing this back to the original, uh, reason for the, the proposed amendment, which was the, um, the change in material.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just trying to figure out, like, if I'm the applicant, okay, who's going to tell me if they may be required? Are they ever that required?
Well, yeah, I understand.
Maybe required if the discretion of Planning Commission or?
Yeah, I, I think we could maybe say maybe required. We'll keep it similar to that gate language, or no, not the gate language, because that's not discretion.
Material language.
But the, uh, yeah, so, uh, maybe required by the Planning Commission to prevent, I think if we just leave it at that.
That's fine.
To prevent damage. I'll add by the Planning Commission after required.
I think that's, so you can just clarify this.
No, that's a good point, that, that is.
Thank you, Eric. Sorry, I missed your time there. I was trying to where I started. Okay, now I think everybody's spoken. So, uh, now we'll move to the next step, which is the opening of public hearing. So, I'm formally opening the public hearing and given that there's no one in the audience, I will ask, uh, entertain a motion, please, to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion from Jay, support from Eric. Call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Okay, so on this note, we'll now bring it back and, uh, unless there are any final comments or concerns, I would entertain, uh, a motion, please, to, uh, approve the signed ordinance as presented and the, the, uh, waste receptacle, um, section as modified, uh, as a recommendation of the Township Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Brian, is that you? Okay, and support from?
Jay.
Jay. Okay, uh, motion is clear. Entertain, uh, call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Very good, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move, uh, uh, as is always, uh, we need to prepare our findings of fact, you know, so that Eric can present this, uh, to the board. And your next meeting, uh, you want this for the next meeting, Eric, or?
The next meeting's, uh, on Monday. It's, it's, uh, too late to make publication of that agenda, so it would be at the April 13th meeting.
Okay, can you arrange that, Brian?
Absolutely.
Very good. Okay, let's move to, uh, the Chair's Report and a couple of items there. Uh, Brian, the Bayview study.
Yeah, thanks, uh, just a couple of quick items here that, uh, are, are central carryovers. I just wanted to make sure that we, we didn't lose sight of them. Um, obviously, I've had, uh, some distractions lately and, um, haven't been in the office as much as I'd like. Um, we have continued to, uh, plug away, albeit slowly, on the Bayview matter. Um, I would expect that, pending any new casework we might get in, that we would, uh, we'd be ready for sort of the, the next presentation on that matter for, uh, for your next meeting. Uh, if you'll recall, I kind of gave you the, the overview the last time we met, uh, noting the extent of non-conformities. Um, we needed to, to take a deeper look at some of the, the aerial photos and the, the GIS overlays to look at things like, uh, setbacks, um, and, and lot widths, uh, which I couldn't necessarily gauge, uh, entirely from, from the information I had. So, uh, we will finish that and I will, uh, I will intend to, to give you a, another presentation at, uh, the upcoming meeting, uh, at which point I think we can start to discuss, uh, the opportunities to, uh, to help alleviate some of these matters, uh, by hopefully some, some relatively minor changes to the zoning ordinance.
Very good, thank you. Uh, master plan review.
Yeah, this is another one of those matters, again, I just don't want you to think that we've forgotten about this. Um, we will, uh, I, I would say pending new casework, resolution of the Bayview part, um, we will, uh, we, we'd like to get, uh, back on the, the roll for our now somewhat extended five-year review of the, of the master plan. Uh, the last, we had really talked in depth about it. Uh, we had, we had talked about breaking it up into smaller pieces to come back and present for discussion amongst the group. Um, if we, uh, do not get in the couple of plan reviews that we might get in, then I think we could probably put that on for the next meeting as well. Um, I just don't want to get, I don't want to get too backed up and I don't want casework to get delayed, uh, because of something that isn't necessarily as pressing. Um, but if we do not have those, then I would, I would suggest that our next meeting would be, uh, would be a, a Bayview, further update, follow-up, uh, as well as sort of then a, a breakdown, getting us, uh, into a little more in-depth into the master plan review.
Very good, definitely applications come first. So, uh, any questions or comments on what Brian has said? Okay, then let's move to the next item, which is the next meeting date. Uh, just for reference, uh, at the next meeting, we will have, uh, uh, officers' elections again. Uh, this ti, this time around, uh, there will only be elections for the Vice Chair and the Secretary. The, uh, the Township Board, uh, through their actions, uh, actually elect the chairperson. They do that, uh, at, at, uh, the annual meeting. So, uh, the, the Chair, which we've normally voted on in the past, uh, will be excluded. So, the, the two will be the two positions, Secretary and Vice Chair. Um, next meeting date, uh, nothing in the hopper, Brian, I take it?
There, we have, we have two potential projects, uh, neither of which have formally submitted at this point, so, uh, it's kind of a, a guessing game. We do have a potential site plan, uh, for a vacant lot on McComb Street. And then, uh, Lori actually had contact from a, uh, a designer today, uh, looking at a new residence, which at this point, looks like it would exceed the maximum lot coverage. Uh, if you'll recall, under our lot coverage floor area ratio ordinance, Planning Commission has 5% discretion, uh, on an increase in lot coverage. So, if, if either, uh, or both of those, uh, come to fruition over the course of the next, uh, you know, couple of weeks, then we would potentially like to have a, a meeting to, to hear both of those items. The site plan, I'm not so sure about. We met with them last month, month before, um, and they were still kind of putting the finishing touches on, uh, on their submittal, so, um, but I, I would expect that the residents would probably move pretty quickly. Uh, I would, I would think that that's something that, uh, if they don't make changes to it and do wish to be heard by the Commission, they would, we would probably have a formal submittal within the next probably week to 10 days.
Okay, uh, then, uh, recognizing that, uh, for you to be ready for, uh, the two presentations that we just discussed on the Chair's Report, uh, when would be a logical time to hold the next meeting, in your opinion?
No, you're going to leave it up to, leave it up to me, huh?
April 6th or April 20th would be, uh, the first and third Mondays in April.
I would.
Or May the 4th.
Yeah, in all honesty, I will have a difficult time making the, the April 6th. So, if, if you can bear with me, the April 20 or jumping into May 4 would be a big help. Um, how about this, Mr. Chair? Would it be possible to, I guess if we can look to the rest of the Commissioners, if we do get those submittals, then I'd like to, to not cost them an extra couple of weeks. Could we pencil in April 20 and then if we don't get those submittals, uh, and we're only going to be continuing our, our Bayview and our master plan discussion, could we maybe push it back to May 4?
Okay, that's appropriate.
Everybody okay with that? Schedules look all right? Steve?
Oh, I'm fine with it.
You're fine with it?
I defer to our expert over there, she's over there with it. She's good.
Okay, so then, uh, this is the way we'll leave it. April 20th, if the, uh, one or both applications come in. May 4th, if there are no applications, and, and at that point, we'll focus on the, uh, Bayview study and the master plan review.
Yeah, and just, um, the one site plan, uh, would not require a formal public hearing, but I think we do provide a, a published and direct mail notice on the lot coverage increases. So, just to give you a, a timeframe, if we were to get that material and have it ready and published properly for the April 20 meeting, we would need something by the end of next week from the applicant, so.
That's not very much time.
Uh, well, but it, but they're almost there. So, it, it, I would say it's possible. Um, I don't want to say that it, it won't happen. Uh, I would say that it is possible if we, I, I have my office hours this Wednesday, so if we either meet with them or do a conference call with them, um, we could probably get them ready for a submittal within a week if, if they're, uh, if the rest of their, uh, house is in order, so to speak.
Okay, very good. Uh, just one other, uh, point before we adjourn, and that is that, uh, when you look at the table up here, there are six of us. We have at the moment, three empty positions on, uh, on our commission. And anybody, uh, in the audience who, uh, has an interest in helping, uh, to plan the growth in, uh, Groseo, uh, when they would like to, uh, be considered, please submit your applications, uh, to the Township and, uh, we would welcome new, uh, participants and, and new blood, always do. Does anybody else have any other comments before we adjourn?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, I've been hearing that there's a, a lot going on with the Township in regards to things going on with the Downtown Development Authority, uh, as well as, I know that Open Space just recently put out an article and they have a survey up about, you know, potentially, uh, purchasing more, uh, open space and that there is a recreation plan update. So, I was just wondering if any of that stuff, you know, does affect this commission or if it's something that, you know, it would be potential for us to, to talk with those, uh, committees or commissions about to just see if there's anything that we can do to be helping them out.
Brian, any thoughts?
Well, we had, uh, the, the first two that you brought up, we had had discussions previously about, uh, some type of a discussion or sit-down with, uh, DDA and Planning Commission already. So, I think that's something we could certainly, um, still, still work on, uh, if, if there are some projects on McComb Street that, uh, that warrant Planning Commission input, uh, certainly that would be, um, that would be a, a fine approach. Uh, anything, not anything, most things that the DDA would do, uh, on McComb Street, depending on what it is, um, if it's just a public project within the right-of-way, Planning Commission might not see it, so you might not be aware of it. If it's anything on actual, uh, you know, land outside of right-of-way, whether the Township owns it or not, chances are Planning Commission would be responsible for a site or a sketch plan on some level. So, at some point, you would probably see something, um, but I, you know, it's something we had discussed in the past, so I think it's just really a, a question of if we can arrange that and set that up. Uh, with respect to the open space, I, I don't unfortunately have any real information on that. I could certainly talk and work with, with Eric and Dale if there's something there that warrants, uh, some review or input by, uh, Planning Commission. Have no problem making those contacts. Um, and then the, the last one you pointed out was the, the rec plan. And inherently in the, uh, the rec plan update process, Planning Commission does have to put forth a recommendation, so, uh, again, at some point in the process, you would, you would be involved, uh, albeit the, the general rule has been it's, it's somewhat a, a minimal involvement, the rec commission themselves, or whatever their, what name are they going by these days, rec? Uh, they typically, they, they do the heavy lifting on that, um, and then we do bring it forward through Planning Commission for, uh, some type of recommendation or endorsement, uh, and then ultimately final approval by the, the Township Board. But you would certainly have a, have a role in that process as well. Uh, I don't expect that project to kick off until, uh, summer or fall at this point, but, uh, haven't, haven't spoken with the, the new-ish, uh, rec director. Um, I just met her a couple of times recently with Dale, just to kind of get familiar and start talking a little bit about some ideas for that rec plan update, so.
If I might, on that topic, uh, glad you brought it up, Brian. Uh, I, I know the DDA is interested in learning more about, you know, what the Planning Commission has done and, and could do with respect to McComb Street. Uh, and I know one of the areas that we, uh, the DDA would certainly want to be involved is, um, in the master plan review. Uh, there, there have been some discussions about some of the things that are in the master plan with respect to McComb Street and design standards and, um, some of the things that we have suggested that we would like to see, that members of the DDA think are counterproductive, uh, to the development of McComb Street. I don't have an individual opinion one way or the other. Uh, it's not, not my strength. You may just have seen what they are, but that, that's not one of them. Uh, but, uh, you know, that, so that's an area where I think there can be some, uh, interchange of ideas to, uh, you know, come up with whether we think that these are still, uh, the right standards for McComb Street or, or they're not. Um, but, so that, you know, certainly would be part of the master plan discussion, I think, would be a good time for a sit-down joint meeting, uh, but there could also be something before that, uh, that would, and it may just be, you know, individual members instead of, you know, six of us or seven or eight or nine or whatever number we can get to on one side of the table and the DDA on the other side, you know, something like that. But, you know, I think there's, I think we, we probably ought to trigger some conversation between the groups.
Well, I would say on that note that, uh, you know, at a minimum, at an absolute minimum, we, we, they could be invited to the, uh, to the presentation that you would make on that McComb Street master plan review. Uh, but I think prior to that, if, you know, just as we've, uh, talked with the ZBA, when they find things that they think aren't right, okay, or the things that we can improve, you know, ordinance is to, to make their job easier to support the community, the same thing goes with the DDA. You know, if the DDA, DDA has a list of things that they think would improve McComb Street, you know, they, it would be very helpful if they would, like, get it to us, so we could evaluate it.
Yeah, I, I think there's, actually, to, to address that point directly, it's a, it's a fair one, uh, but I think the, I think there's a lack of, um, understanding by DDA members. I have been on the DDA for a while, so I, I try to share some of it, but I certainly could do more in the way of kind of bringing some of the standards. They were surprised, the other members were surprised that there even were standards for some of these things. And, and I said, you know, they're out there, uh, you know, see somebody in the Township, they can give you a copy of anything that you need and, uh, and if you have issues with it, you know, tell me what they are and I'd be happy to take them back. Um, but it's, you know, the, the sorts of things I've heard about are, you know, parking behind the buildings instead of in the, you know, street side. Well, you know, that was a, that was a dis, dis-ism that we, you know, probably 10 years ago, uh, or more, said that that was the right thing to do for the, 20 years ago. Uh, you know, I don't know if that's right or not, um, and, and that, I'm sure it's one of those things, it's a, you know, it's, it's an opinion thing. I mean, the, McComb Street was built and we actually, where, where there was street-side parking, that was all taken out, uh, in the course of putting it in at the sidewalks and everything, and everything was moved to the back. You know, is it, uh, feasible to make a change like that? I don't know. Would we want to make a change like that even if it were feasible? I don't know. But, uh, it's the sort of thing that, uh, the DDA needs to, I think, better understand, you know, what the powers of the Planning Commission are and, and, uh, and, and open up that dialogue as much as, as vice versa. So, I think it might be a good idea to, to have, you know, a, a sit-down, maybe talk about what the, uh, powers and responsibilities and duties of the different groups are, because I think, um, I think there, there, there probably ought to be more coordination between the groups and, and if that's supposed to be my job, sitting on both, I haven't been doing it. I wasn't appointed liaison.
So, I think it, I think it's, or at least maybe it's appropriate to let them know that the master plan process is coming up, so if there is specific input, that was the right time to, uh, to bring that forward.
Do they have, uh, do they have copies of the McComb Street portion of the master plan?
I don't believe they have any of that.
How about? How about, how about the McComb Street zoning district and the architectural standards and they go with it?
Yeah, I don't think they have that.
Okay, well, that'd be a great place to start. You know, Brian or Lori, what can we do to get, prepare some packages for these folks? That would at least give them an opportunity to read a little bit, maybe study up, because it might then make the master plan review a little more meaningful for them if they're not caught cold. Who's, how many people are on the DDA?
Seven.
Seven? Can you arrange for that, Lori, and just say it's a late Christmas gift from the Planning Commission? Advise them, advise them that we will invite them to the master plan review session on McComb Street at a date sometime later this year. And that, and feed that to them if you would, please.
I think that'd be great.
And then Jay, you can kind of assess how it goes. And if you think there's a need for an individual sit-down, you know, the officers can go over there with Brian and we can meet with them. I mean, we can do that, if that would be beneficial. So let's try that approach. Agreed, Brian?
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or concerns? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, support?
Support.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.